Good evening, members of the Uvalde School Council. Tonight, I want to speak to you about the parents' concern of our safety of our children. The safety of our children cannot become a republic or dramatic because it should be an American agenda of y'all tonight. Tonight, it must become Uvalde, Texas's agenda. I guess I come to you to ask that perhaps the city could work in collaboration with the school district to create a safer environment for our children. If you go visit the elementary schools today, you will see that they are not in any safer zone than today or yesterday or the day of the tragedy. We cannot continue to have schools that have access to any teacher's classroom by an intruder parked on this side of the street or that can access jump to fence. Our elementary schools are built with the same concept of a motel. If I was able to jump a fence to gain access to my students, so can an intruder. We must build facilities where our classrooms cannot be accessible to anyone passing by. We have known this as far back as Sandy Hook and yet have done nothing to ensure our teachers and students' safety. Our students do not have an indoor gym where our children can play. The day of the tragedy, there were over 200-plus students, my son being one of them, playing outside at recess prior to the incident. They were under the canopy on a cinnamit black slab, visible to anyone driving by. That is a problem. The student district provides school security, and in times like these, we figured that they would work into our force with every law enforcement official in this community. Instead, what we found is that the school chief is now passing the bucket to who was responsible for protecting our children. Sadly, that individual is now part of this governing body today. I see that as a conflict of interest. I understand now from Representative Dustin's report that two officers could have shot the intruder before the entry into the campus. It is disheartening that this was not done. If nothing is done by this council to ensure the safety of our children, perhaps it is time for individuals who are willing to risk their lives for our children to fill your seats. Perhaps it takes tragedies like these, one we experienced, to generate the interest in the public service. We must guarantee that we will be the people that is going to be heard tonight. I find it shameful that we had almost 100 officers on the scene, and I had to leave work and save my own.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez.
Yes, Mr. Board President, next is Jesus Rios Jr.
Dr. Harold, it's actually Riso, last name Riso. It's probably my bad handwriting, so apologize for that.
Thank you, sir.
Someone recently asked, "How do you feel? Are you mad at God?" I paused for a little bit. I thought about the question, and I said, "I'm a little confused." I'm here on behalf of many friends and a lot of family, and I'm here to talk about accountability, something that we've all been exposed to by our parents, by our schoolteachers throughout many years, talked about accountability. I thought about different quotes, MLK, John F. Kennedy, different things that came to mind. One of them has spoken many years ago by Jesus, and he said, "Then you will know the truth, and the truth shall set you free." First, I'd like to pray that God give comfort, wisdom, patience, and courage to all the families and everyone impacted by the tragedy. And at this time, I'd like to hold a moment of silence for 21 seconds, each second for each one of the victims. Thank you. And now, I'd like for each one of you to imagine what it must have felt like to wait for 77 minutes, 77 long minutes, possibly eternity, for the kids. When someone finally decided to breach and take down the subject, it's my understanding that Jackie Gossard has still had a pulse. I apologize to Jackie, and I apologize to the 20 other people that didn't make it that day. Then there's a teacher that waited and waited and waited some more before somebody had the courage to enter. Mr. Reyes, I apologize to you as well, sir. But I give thanks that you were able to survive and be able to tell the story from someone that was trapped inside to the countless children who witnessed this massacre and also had to wait the 77 minutes before somebody was courageous enough to decide to breach. I apologize to y'all. I want you to think about something. I want you to think about what they could have been feeling, what they could have been thinking about. Where are my parents? Where's the police? The people that are designed to protect them, the people that are trained to protect them, nowhere to be found, sitting there. They're not designed to go to war, to do anything. There's the most vulnerable innocent people, and they had to wait 77 minutes. Unacceptable. To my point, accountability. I went to school with some of you guys on the board, ladies on the board. When you guys decided, and ladies, of course, when y'all decided to run for the board, it wasn't a popularity contest. We're not running for High School Student Council. When you guys took the oath, it was something very serious. It was something that you obviously have to take very serious. And at one point or another, you're gonna have to draw a line in the sand to decide if you hold one of your own accountable. Pete, Mr. Pete Aradondo is also my friend, and I'm sure we all got along with him. At one point or another, we're gonna have to decide if we hold him accountable. And I pray that you make the right decision, not for me, but for these people, for these people that all come here with the pain, bearing the pain, carrying the weight. Dr. Harold, we thank you for everything you've done for us in Basil, sir. We made a lot of progress, recently became involved with the school, volunteering and stuff like that, Mr. Harold. At one point or another, sir, you may be asked to resign. You're the top man, the top person in this program, sir. Everything, unfortunately, lays on you, sir. I've got a list of questions. Sorry to keep them breathing.
Sir, you've got about 20 more seconds, sir.
How many?
We're going on about five minutes, so.
We're going on five minutes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I apologize.
No problem, sir.
I had a list of questions, real brief. The thing that I can't wrap my mind around is, how is Mr. Aradondo still with the program? How is he still employed? I understand, you know, there's processing procedures and everything, but I've never seen an organization that will allow this gentleman to stay inactive, where people can actually see him, send him on discharge duty, call it whatever you want to call it, suspend him pending termination. It's an insult to injury. These people are in pain, and you allow this to happen. One last thing. I pray that each one of you guys will make the right decision for the fallen 21 and everybody else that went through this. The children that didn't make it, we don't hear their voice anymore. But I promise you one thing, we will speak for them. You will hear their voice through us until accountability takes place. And I remind you what Jesus talked about, truth. Every single thing that we do, including myself, will come to light, and we will be held accountable for that. I do thank y'all.
Yes, next Brett Cross.
My name is Brett Cross. I shouldn't be here. I've never intended a school board meeting before. Never had the need to or couldn't attend because of work. That ended, that ended May 24th, 2022. Uziah Garcia was a fourth grader at Robb Elementary. My wife and I took him in and his sisters in to raise his own to get him away from the toxic malevolent situation. We were given him a life that he deserved, a life where he could be a child and worry about childhood things, where his biggest worry was if he was going to get to play his video games after school. He went from a D and F student to getting his very first A and B honor roll on May 24th. He was excelling academically for the first time in his short life, thanks to Mr. Reyes. Now, Uziah and 18 other students and two teachers, excuse me, heroes are the reasons why I'm here. We were failed by Pete Aradondo. He failed our kids, teachers, parents, and city. And by keeping him on your staff, y'all are continuing to fail us. I have four other children that are school age, and they're afraid. Frankly, I am too. Having Pete still employed, knowing he is incapable of decision-making that saves lives, is terrifying. Him not cooperating with the investigations that are ongoing is also quite disheartening. Innocence doesn't hide. Innocence doesn't change its story. But innocence did die on May 24th at Robb Elementary. Not just the victims, but every survivor, every child that heard those shots, every child that ran from the school, every teacher that stood steadfast in front of their children. Their innocence has been killed as well. So I implore you, all of you, to do what is right. Remove Pete from your employment, show us that you are Uvalde Strong, that you are with the community, that you stand for what is right for our children, or show yourself to be Uvalde Week, along with Pete. Thank you.
Javier Casares.
Hello, I'm Javier Casares, father of Jacqueline Casares. Just want to remind you what the true agenda of this need is and human rights, the right to receive education in a safe and healthy environment. In this case, Robb, it wasn't safe. And someone needs to take accountability for not ensuring that human rights, for this kind of freedom that was infringed when a murderer simply walked onto the campus and into classrooms. There's a list that I got from the Uvalde CISD preventative and security measures, and I want to emphasize on some of them, there's 20 of them, one more. It says here, "Police officers." "The district employs four officers, including chief, detective, and two officers." Is that really enough? You know, now that it's not. "Security staff." Secondary campuses have staff who patrol doors, parking lots, and perimeters on campuses, while only secondary campuses, not elementary schools. Another one, "Threat Assessment Teams." "Every campus employs a team of trained professionals that convene to identify, evaluate, classify, and address threats, a potential threat to school security." Who was that team, and when was the last time they came? "Social media threats." "Uvalde utilizes social sentinel to monitor all social media with a connection to Uvalde as a measure to identify and possible threats that might be made against students or staff." Did this really work, or was it even used? "Raptor Technologies." "UCISD utilizing raptor technologies." "It's a system that screens for security offenders and alert staff of custody violations or provides district-wide reporting for all visitors." How effective is that, and do all campuses have that? "Perimeter fencing." "Dalton, Anthony, and Robb have fencing that encloses campuses and is designed to limit or restrict access to individuals without a need to be on campus." A four-foot chain link fence keeps animals out, not humans. "Security visibles and outside door buzzing systems." "Uvalde High School utilizes security system and outside door buzz system." Anthony Elementary utilizes security, what type of security in their office? Okay, why not Robb, Dalton, Flores, or the junior high? "Security cameras." "Under cameras are Uvalde High School and 24 Morales High School." Again, what about Dalton, Robb, Anthony, and Flores? "Locked classroom door policy." "Teachers are instructed to keep their classroom doors closed and locked at all times." In this case, room 111. It didn't work. They didn't fix it. He called and told the principal a couple of times that he was afraid to do it again because of him getting in trouble, neck to the safety of kids' lives. Yeah. If that's all I have, one more thing is, what procedures or what safety tactics do you have for us to meet here? I could have a gun right now. Did anybody check? No. So we're the safety there. So one cop. It's ridiculous. As far as the meeting goes, three minutes is not enough. I think our babies' lives are worth in three minutes. So next time, think about that, please. Thank you.
Next one, Mel.
Belinda DiRiola. I'm sorry, Belinda is my mom, and I'm gonna go ahead and take her spot. Won't be long. I think it's pretty clear, it's pretty clear what everybody wants here. We all know that they messed up. We all know that this wasn't handled right. Y'all can do everything you want to try to make us happy. It's not gonna work. Y'all know what we want, accountability. Y'all know. I'm sorry. There's so many questions that everybody obviously has, you know, if Pete was in charge, why didn't he have a master key? If Pete was in charge, why didn't he do this? If there were so many officers, why didn't they go in? It was, obviously, we all know it was handled wrong. I had officer from every department look me in the eye because I was trying so hard to get in there and ask for you to trust them. How are we supposed to continue our lives here knowing that those people that are supposed to protect us let down our family? Most of these parents don't want to be here, but we're here because we have to speak for our children because they can't speak for themselves anymore. So please, just do us the favor and do what you know is right and make these people accountable for what happened. You guys say that y'all have, you opened up this meeting saying, "Oh, you have all the necessary tools to educate these people, these children where they need to be." But do you have the necessary equipment to make sure that they reach that point of their life? Because my daughter will never reach that point of her life. So just please, do what's right. That's what we want. That's why we're all here.
Next one, sir.
Deliana Garcia. Good evening. My name is Deliana Garcia. My parents are upset and even more so. I want to thank the school board for allowing me to be able to speak on behalf of my siblings and family this evening. There may be sitting on this board who knew my mother either personally or professionally. And all of you would agree that she was an outstanding teacher. She went above and beyond in her profession and as a compassionate citizen of Uvalde. In her 23 years of service as an educator, she nurtured, provided, taught, and protected all of her students till her last breath. I can attest to the statement because I had the privilege of meeting many of her former students who are now educators themselves due to the inspiration my mother encompassed. I need you to know that the horrifying manner in which my mother was murdered and taken from us completely shattered our hearts, but made my dad stop. The pain of losing the love of his life, his high school sweetheart, was too much for him to bear. Like my mother, my father was dedicated to his family and career. They are both devout Catholics. She did everyone like family and knew no stranger. The relationships they created in their careers carried with them to their home. And as many of you here know from experience, anyone who entered our home was treated like family with their love and hospitality. I need you to know, yesterday was an extremely difficult day as we experienced the beginning of many lonely family occasions, now in absence of our parents. Even though he worked most holidays, we realized yesterday on Father's Day that we will never get to enjoy our mom's famous celebratory breakfast or the table we once sat at with absolute joy and laughter is now quiet and holds two empty seats. I need you all to understand the magnitude of this loss our family has to endure, that the story I'm telling you about my parents and the tragedy of what happened to them is our reality. A horrific nightmare that we will never be able to awake from. We now have to wrap our heads around the fact that they will not be here for big or small milestones. Any and all accomplishments are part of our everyday routine. We were all excited with anticipation to celebrate their 25th wedding anniversary on the 28th of this month, a celebration that will never happen. I need you all to know the enormous responsibility my oldest brother, Christian, will now have to take on. Our responsibility that was once shared between my two parents has now fallen on his young shoulders from a situation so preventable. The futures of my two older brothers headed to a place so bright is at risk of being put on pause to now take on the task of raising my younger sister and myself. I need you to know, as the oldest daughter at the age of 16, an age when a girl needs her parents the most, I'm trying to fill the shoes of both my beloved mother and father the best I can, a burden no one my age should have to go through. I need you all to know, the trembling pain my little sister suffers every day is unbearable. Her biggest regret was that she was not able to say goodbye to our mom and dad. But there shouldn't have been a reason my mom didn't come home that day. It crushes my soul to know that she'll never get to experience the joy of planning a quinceañera and having the first dance with our mom and dad the way I did. At just 12 years old, this little girl was robbed more than all of us. The knowledge of being orphaned at such a young age is inconceivable. These are the consequences my family has to suffer due to the lack of due diligence. I would like to share a quote of one of my little sister's agonizing cries. She said, "My mom died protecting her students, but who was protecting my mom? This will always haunt me and should always haunt all of you."
Next one, sir. DeNita Salazov.
Good evening. I really hate to give you my back. I'm so sorry. I, um, I've never read a loss of words, but I honestly don't know. All I can say is, I am making myself strong because of our community. And without everyone's help, everybody, I wouldn't even be here. And I can't say I know what you've been through. Don't. But I, I promise you, the children will never be forgotten. I'll make sure of that. I will make sure of that. I was also here to address something else, but I do not want that to seem like I do not feel your pain. Dr. Harold, the administration, and court members and community, I received an email from Samantha Booth, who works at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, and she has offered some free training for teachers. And that's why I'm here, because in addition to being here for everybody, everybody here, I realize that everybody is hurting, everybody needs help. Our teachers are hurting too, as well as everybody here behind me. And I am gonna do my utmost best to make sure that we bring this great training here. It is free of charge for a one-hour training for any teacher, math teacher, here in this district that would like to get this training. And I do not want this to be hidden at all. I want everybody to know because they have a big heart, and they are providing this training for free to our district. After this one-hour training, I am going to go out and ask for, I know that I can get it. Are we gonna get asked for a donation from some corporation? I know there are people out there that are wanting to help and don't know how that we can get this training free for the entire district. That is why I'm here. I want you to know that. And I also want you to know that no one's gonna stop me. No one, no one. If I can get this training, it will come to our school. It will. That is the least, the least, and no one will stop me. I am so sorry that I have to give you my back. I'm really sorry. I think some of you know where to find me, Math Rocks. I'm the Math Rocks lady. But, um, I can be strong, and if you need anything, please, please. I give you lots of hugs. I honestly send you all the hugs that I could possibly give you. Thank you.
One more question? Yes, Mr. Board President, Monica Sais Martinez.
Good afternoon. My name is Monica Sais Martinez, and I am employed at Hillcrest Memorial Funeral Home, located directly across Robb Elementary. I must first address that I am not a City of Uvalde resident, nor do my children attend UCISD. However, I was born and raised here and ironically raised across the street from Robb School. This was and always will be my neighborhood, of which is dear to my heart. I currently reside in Kenepa with my husband and my children. Before the May 24th massacre, there were some things of concern that I want to address today. On a couple of occasions last year, towards the end of the school year, there were some bailouts in the vicinity of Robb School, one that resulted in a high-speed chase that caused a wreck in the same canal Salvador Ramos crashed in. There were many days in which I'd see the gate open to the school that led up to the teacher's parking lot. There were days that children played outside that that gate was open. I called the school on several occasions, hoping to get an answer as to why this gate was open. My attempts failed when no one answered my calls. The gate of which I speak is at most 50 feet away from where the shooter crashed his vehicle. Never at any point did the school provide Never at any point did the school provide security at the gate for our children before these bailouts. After these bailouts, I'm sorry. So what is my point, you may ask? How do these two instances connect? My concern and my point is, because there were bailouts near the school, UC ISD Police Department should have provided security at this gate and on the opposite side of the school. Had there been security at this gate, I truly believe the shooter would not have entered Robb School and these children would be here with us today. So my question is, why? Why did UC ISD not provide security after these bailouts? Why aren't teachers armed and ready to protect our kids? This picture is of a sign posted at Rock Springs ISD and this is what it reads. Be aware that the staff at Rock Springs ISD may be armed and will use whatever force is necessary to protect our students. Why isn't this the same at UC ISD? Why do we have our own police department? I will continually say we, because Uvalde is still my home and I have nieces and nephews in your schools. Last year, Sheriff Ruben Olasco made a promise to Canepa ISD that he'd have sheriff's officers protect our children and school 24/7 due to the high increase of bailouts and illegals in our area. We do not have a local police department, therefore we rely on sheriff's department for protection. Our school is also extremely difficult to get into. I feel my children are safe, but why not? Why is that not the case here in Uvalde? Sheriff, if sheriff's officer is responsible for our county residents, the local police department for the City of Uvalde needs, then why isn't, or in this case, wasn't UC ISD Police Department not standing guard and protecting all campuses? I understand that a previous meeting earlier this month, there were promises of protection for UC ISD schools. My hopes are that these promises are fulfilled and we never have another UC ISD massacre. What will come with this promise? Will these security officers be equipped to aim at a target and stop them before they commit a crime at our schools? Will these security officers be in shape and be able to run and chase after someone? And no offense to anyone out of shape, I stand before you in that condition. I know I probably couldn't run and chase after someone trying to enter a school, but I would feel children are safe and secure with someone who is thoroughly equipped to protect, to be able to chase on foot, take a person down or aim a gun and hit the target. I would like to see teachers equipped with protection gear, a gun, a stun gun, mace, pepper spray, et cetera. We need to have a plan. May 24th had no plan. Children were pulled out of a window well after many children were already dead and injured. Children were pulled out of a window and had nowhere to run. Myself and coworkers directed the children to the funeral home and sheltered them. They had nowhere to go. There was no plan. The school board has the authority to make these changes and implement them, sticking to the rules and plans and not wavering once the dust settles. We take things for granted, of course. Who would have ever thought this would happen in our beloved town of Uvalde? But it did. We no longer live in the times of my elementary school days, nor the days of our parents or our grandparents. We live in different times. Times have changed and they aren't the same and they won't be. The result of not having a plan and protection for our children is that we have now buried 19 children and two teachers and we can never bring them back. We have many students and teachers suffering from PTSD, myself and my coworkers included, because we experienced firsthand the trauma and the chaos that day brought. That day is something many of us relive daily and the healing can take years or may never come. Last but not least, I ask that prayer be allowed back in our schools. I am also a minister and in all my years of serving God, I know that prayer works. Canepa ISD allows parents and clergy to pray inside the school before the school year begins. I am so grateful for that. Letting God in first and take authority keeps the enemy out. There are many other things that Canepa ISD implements that have been effective to keep our school safe and structured. I highly recommend that you, the UC ISD school board, reach out to Canepa ISD school board and seek their counsel to help make UC ISD a safer, more secure, structured place to attend school. In my times that I've spoken to Mr. Lambert, we talked about the things that the school where my children attend, that they don't mess around. And Mr. Lambert, I recall you said, you should run for school board here. I said, I don't live here. He's a no-frills kind of guy. He is a man of wisdom and I believe that his wisdom could help bring a decision as to what do you need to do to keep the school structured, to keep it safe? That day should have never happened. The security should have been there when the bailouts happened a year ago. Because we have bailouts, does every school should have been secure? Robb School is so close to Highway 83. Anthem School is close to Highway 90. This should have never happened. In the days following the bailouts, there was absolutely nobody, nobody protecting the school. You would think because there was an accident where there was a bailout, there would have been security put in place. Hey, this is happening. That gate is constantly open. I sat there many times outside of my work, watching children play and that gate is open. We cannot take back May 24th, but what we can do is make the future better for the students of UC ISD, make it a safe place to go. So I ask you, please, please, consult with one another, think about it. We're all hurting. It hurts everyone. But you know, there's one thing that I will repeatedly say to anyone who comes at me and says, we're hurting. I said, you know what? He didn't have to stand there and hear every gunshot. Every single one. Every single one. You weren't there when Mr. Garza was inside the funeral home with me, trying to calm down other children, while he's trying to wait patiently for where his daughter's at. Y'all weren't there when I held Gloria Casares' hand while she cried waiting for her daughter? And y'all weren't there when Jennifer Lugo was practically looking for her daughter? That day shouldn't have happened. We need to come together and we need to protect our children. Thank you for your time.